I don't see a representative from the Baptist Church who was gonna do our invocation. Is there anybody here in the room that would like to offer up the invocation?
Sure.
Thanks, Kyle.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather tonight. I pray that you would be with each one here as we're away from our families and just be with the discussion and the business at hand and go before us in our efforts to be prepared what you have made it to be. And we thank you for all that you do and for watching over us. We pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for that.
Wonderful.
It is 7:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Devin, would you take all copies?
My panel.
Here.
Chad Fuller. Mindy Delvey. Here. Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Sue Young.
Here.
All of the county courts except council member Chad Fuller.
Looking for approval of our agenda for tonight?
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
We have a motion from Mindy, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looking for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting?
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the October 20th, 2022 regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mindy, regarding the minutes of October 20th. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now we'll move to pre-approved reports and presentations. We don't have any, so we'll move on. Comments from the public? I don't think we have that either, so we'll move on. Communications, that would be Devin.
Oh, thank you.
None from Devin. Into the mayor and department head reports, I will just let you know that I have a memo for a special council meeting that I'm going to be giving to Devin under the Perry City Charter Section 5.3B. Please call a special meeting of the Perry City Council for 7:15 PM, Monday, November 21st, 2022, in council chambers at City Hall for the following purpose: to allow members of the public to observe the Michigan Daily 3 Evening Lottery Drawing and Michigan Daily 4 Evening Lottery Drawing as they are broadcast and/or streamed online. And that's for the purposes of determining the award of the license for marijuana facility based on our applications. I just want to remind everybody, too, that the Veterans Day Parade, November 11, will be held here in the city of Perry. It will start at 5:00. And then there is a brief ceremony by the veterans in the parking lot area behind the fire station. And we can move into now the department head reports. Megan, would you like to go first?
Sure. Hello, everybody. I reached out to the auditors this afternoon. It's been probably more than a month since they've last asked anything of me, just to check out where we're at with the audit. We expect everything to be finalized and wrapped up in the next two weeks. So after that, I'll get to scheduling a time where they can come in and present to us, because I know we did miss out on that last year. With the approval of the credit card policy last meeting, I have started the process of ordering credit cards for staff. We are dating three: one for myself, that will be shared as needed as office purchases are required from Austin City Hall, Kyle will have one, and Kevin from DBW will have one as well. And then the other thing I'm doing right now is I'm exploring a grant from the DNR. It's the DNR Spark Grant. It's funded by ARPA funds. It was infiltrated into the park systems. This requires no five-year plan and no matching contribution. There is a minimum ask of $100,000, though, so I'm looking at opportunities just to see, make sure we can put our hat in the ring for that. Probably focusing on Jubilee Park. I think my intention would probably be to pave the loop around and probably some play structures to get us over that $100,000 threshold. And it could go up to a million. I don't want to reach for the stars.
Oh, and just go.
So if anyone has any ideas they'd like to add to the mix, it does need to be focused at Jubilee Park. We can't do a mix. The Spark Grant, though, will allow us to apply three separate times, and they'll have three separate funding rounds. The first one will close December 19 for applications, and there'll be two more application periods next year with dates to be determined.
Great.
I also gave being your packets this week, first quarter budget comparison. I know it's later in the agenda. Do you want me to just touch on it now or do you want me to come back up later?
We'll have him come back up later.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions?
Thank you. We'll move on to DBW. Our superintendent, Kevin, is here. John's also here, because I asked him to be here. Kevin has some things to talk to us about, and I thought you might have questions for John, so I asked him to come. Thank you, John, for coming.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Kevin.
Just touched on some things we've been working on. We were able to settle the water tower project with the company that did the work. They, we swapped some weather days for the water loss and stuff that we had with that. So we reached a reasonable agreement with them, so we made final payment on that. So we're done with that. Until spring, we have to have our inspection to revisit it, all of it, and make sure everything's still the product that they said we were gonna get. So the final pieces of the park equipment have been installed, so we have all five pieces installed now. Turned out well. Pleased with the layout. Got to do the route myself once just to check it out. We've been fighting the leaf pickup. It's been ongoing. Seems like all the leaves fell down at once. We've had a few complaints that we're not doing it fast enough. The crews are working a route. They start in one spot, they work the same route, they make it all the way around town typically in the course of a week, and then they start over. It takes about a week to get around town right now, but everyone's piling the leaves up. We're not skipping people, we're not choosing favorites, it's just the way it works out. So if anyone's complaining about the leaf pickup, I apologize. We're doing everything we can do. So we did seasonal water shut-offs at the schools for their outbuildings. We're preparing for colder weather, winter, starting on equipment. Fire winterization has been completed. We started working on Christmas lights. We have a little over a month until Christmas Fantasy. That'll be the night of November 23rd, the same as last year. Next, we can go on to, we have the paperwork for repairs. We need to service one of the solar bees that's in the lagoon as part of the lagoon treatment system for lagoon health. It kind of keeps things mixed up and distributes the sludge at the bottom of the lagoons, keeps it evenly distributed. It's my understanding they're over 15 years old?
That particular one is, was it original? I think that one is more around the age of 20.
20 years old? So it's done its job for the last 20 years. We're looking at doing a rebuild on it as opposed to replacing it. It's my understanding they're over $40,000 to replace. So $5,000, if they have the company come in and freshen it up and get everything working properly again, seems reasonable to me for something that's exposed to the weather and is in a harsh element application. So does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. Next, I believe you all were given a proposal for work to be done on well four. This is, we had a failure of a check valve in the well, so the water was back feeding into the aquifer. John noticed it over the weekend when he was doing the daily water checks, that there was a negative flow going out of the treatment plant into the aquifer, which can cause treatment problems and issues with the aquifer. So to prevent any issues, he isolated it, turned the well off so it can't function, and called Northern Pump and Well to come out. And we scheduled the work, because it's an emergency situation. We can't run it at max capacity without all of our wells, and we like to keep the alternation of the three wells consistent. They came out this morning to pull the well and inspect the check valve and figure out what the issue was, and we have bigger problems than the check valve. It seems that the well has fulfilled its obligation to the city of Perry and is gonna need more work than we anticipated. The drop pipe for the well, as they were, they pulled the whole drop pipe out of the well, and as they were trying to lay it down, the threads were, the metal was so thin that the threads broke free, and the pipes actually broke into pieces and fell on the ground. And so it's gonna need a new drop pipe. It's a submersible well, which is, they're not serviceable, they're not rebuildable, so typically you change the pump and the motor at the time when you do any well work on those. That well is 15 years old and has never had any issues, maintenance service, nothing to speak of. So it is part of the process and what we do. It's unfortunate that, you know, it gave way, but the, just the check valve was the first part of the issue, which led to the rest of the problems. So we have to continue with the emergency purchase status on this, because, like I said, we have to have that capacity, we have to have that well in service for the state guidelines to meet demand and have redundancies and that type of thing. So we don't have the numbers for the total repair yet. This 4620 was just to have them come out, pull it, inspect the well, and start the process. And now we know what the problem is, it's gonna go up from there. But after 15 years of, you know, municipal service, it's submerged in water, it's a volatile application. It's part of what we do, so.
Kevin told me earlier today that they, they being Northern Pump and Well, said that the parts are available.
Yes.
So it's not like we're gonna have to wait months or, you know, a long time.
He was gonna source everything, that they have pumps and motors available. So it's not a very deep well, which I think will benefit us. It's only about 70 foot deep, so we don't need a bunch of drop pipe. So I think that will help, not aid in the cost, but it'll definitely save us as opposed to a 200-foot well. So.
Do you guys have questions for Kevin or for John? That's why I asked John to be here, in case you had questions for him.
Not looking for issues. Do you have any idea whether or not there should be any kind of inspection done when we hit this one back up of the other two wells to make certain we're not tending on a time capsule waiting for another issue?
They're on the schedule.
Yeah.
The submersible, so every April, we do a pump efficiency test on all three of the wells and track, and that well has run even up to the spring prior to the water tower project, consistent throughout its life. We have all the data up in the office, Northern Pump and Well, Peerless Midwest, on all three wells. So we've rehabilitated well one three or four years ago, well three was rehabilitated probably six or seven years ago. So that one will be pulled again here shortly for another inspection after we get through this one.
This is the oldest of the three, then?
This is the newest. This one was installed at the time of the water treatment plant in 2008, '09 timeframe.
And it's been maintenance-free ever since. It's just, it's run its course. Yep. So I took pictures of it and went, as they pulled it out, there was a lot of corrosion and rust and sediment built up on the pipe itself. So, I mean, it, our water's hard that comes through the plant as we pump it out, so that process is hard on pumps and bowls and everything that makes it function. So it's just time, unfortunately. We didn't get to choose the time, it chose it for us.
I understand, I just wanted to understand whether or not we get something, not necessarily in the future, but it sounds like with the work that's been done on the other wells.
The other wells are vertical turbines, so they have the motor that's mounted on top, they have a shaft that goes down and spins the actual, the bowls, the pump itself, and generates the water in upward motion that way. This one, the pump is actually down at the bottom of the well and pumps from the bottom and pushes the water out, so it's, it submerges down in the water. I'm guessing that the rust and corrosion of the drop pipe is what led to the check valve hanging up, which led to us getting to this point, so.
Well, it's better it came, fell apart outside the well and not in the well.
Right, yeah, that's, it was fortunate to that effect. It was a little scary as it broke apart when they're, I was there, witnessed it, and they had crew on the ground, but there was no one near it when it happened, so we were fortunate in that aspect.
Should we look into a price on them doing a stainless steel drop pipe? Is there any benefit to that? Is either one of you, I'm sure it's probably galvanized.
The ones that we put in on well one, those were coated with like an epoxy, an approved type of, so we can look into it and see what they say when.
Do a cost comparison, so if it's $20,000, no, but, you know.
Stainless probably is gonna be way.
It might be outrageously priced, but at least ask the, have the conversation with them and weigh the option.
See what the normal application would be for that type of well is probably what we'll go with.
So you have 15, 16 years out of that one and weigh the price.
We just plan on it again at year 14 or 10. You know, there was no reason to pull the thing prior to now.
Basically, no issues with it.
The submersibles are kind of like run to failure.
Right. Okay.
I did ask Kevin earlier today if we had money in the budget, and he said, "Yeah, we do, we just don't know how much this is gonna cost."
Yeah, in the water and sewer fund, we planned for a certain amount of failures, so, I mean, we have some of that built in already, and we might have to go above and beyond that, but I don't think it's gonna put a huge strain on the budget, depending on where the numbers come in at. And we'll talk that over. You guys will be in the loop on the whole process.
Do you have any idea when the repair might actually take place?
They got out here in less than a week to pull it and do the work. I'm guessing they'll be able to fit us in their schedule relatively quickly. It doesn't seem like they scheduled too far out. So I'm guessing once the parts are in hand, it'd probably be within a week, it's just sourcing and getting the parts.
Well, we don't have another council meeting for two weeks, obviously, and there is emergency repair authorization for the mayor, up to $20,000 as a?
For water.
For sewer. For water. So we can, I can approve that.
We'll know before it's time to do the installs, we need to go above and beyond that and come to council, so.
All right, so we'll, we'll do what we can and come back with the rest. Any other questions for John or Kevin? Did you have anything else you wanted to tell us about?
No, I think things are going pretty smoothly with my role here and getting acclimated to things. It's just a long learning process, and it seems like, you know, this, this well thing and just playing with stuff that's all coming to a head right now, so we'll get through it, and I have no issues with, with anything so far, so.
Very good, Kevin, thank you. And thank you, John, again, for being here. Kyle?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mike.
We are ready to transition the, our handguns from 40-calibers to the 9-millimeters. Catch you up to date on where we're at, send in all the paperwork that I am aware of to our vendor, and she's assured me that she has four set aside for us. We are turning in eight old pistols. And I say old, they're very engagous. When I started in law enforcement, 40 caliber was the caliber that was recommended and widespreadly, widely spread use. That's not so much the case anymore. Everybody's reverted back to 9-millimeters or gone to 9-millimeters. And so that's what we're gonna be going to. So needless to say, through the years, we've collected 40-caliber handguns. Eight of those are going back to where we're buying these from, and so essentially, we're gonna have a, last thing, we go an $84 credit with the company based on the terming of these 40-caliber guns. So essentially, the cost is, for the new ones, is completely offset. That's not to include new holsters, new weapon-mounted lights, the optics that I'm looking to upgrade these pistols with. That will come out of my budget. Megan and I have spoken, and we have a game plan for where that money's gonna come from. But needless to say, I was really happy to find eight handguns to turn in, and that actually doesn't include the six that the officers and myself are actually gonna buy. So there's six more that we're going to be purchasing ourselves that, for what we carry now. So that will help offset the budget. It just doesn't mean that the money goes back into my budget, so. But the eight will offset that cost. So I digress. We are in the process of a new records management system, a report rating system, if you will. And of course, the company that we're with now said, "Oh, you're leaving us. How about this price instead?" And it was greatly reduced, over half, actually, of what they were currently billing us, and it pretty much sold them too little to eat. We're too far in this process with the new company, and we've demoed it, the officers have demoed the new system, and I'm just not gonna play that game. They should've given us that bottom dollar when they had the opportunity. So we're moving forward with that. We'll talk further details if you need to later on here in the agenda. Had the opportunity to go into the schools, the high school and the middle school this week, and train their staff and Alice, and we worked through a lot more details with the enhanced lockdown opportunities that the staff is gonna be given as far as protocol and procedure in response to an active violence situation. Want to thank Owasso Public Safety and the sheriff's office for a night shoot that we all participated in from Perry. The Owasso Public Safety put on the training, and it was hosted at the county range, and that was over a couple-week time period and a couple, several different nights. I got to participate as a range master and help out with that, but it was very well done, and it's very useful, and there were several comments I heard from various departments, officers, deputies, that, "Wow, I can't remember the last time I shot in the dark." And I was like, "That's good," because a lot, especially this time of year, a lot of what we do is in the dark, so that was good. We are working with the sheriff's office with overtime grant project for seatbelt speed, distracted driving, drunk driving. When I first started here, there were these opportunities all the time we could sign up for, and it was, I believe, federally reimbursed monies for overtime for teaming up and having Seatbelt Enforcement Task Force throughout the county. That went by the wayside through several different sheriffs, but thankfully, we've been able to work with the sheriff's department. They picked the program back up, and we're gonna be working with them on some of these. So you may see enhanced or additional hours going out potentially, but it's all reimbursable, including retirement. They go down to that much detail to know how much the city pays in for retirement, for hours worked and all of that. So I'm glad to be a part of that, and I'm grateful that the sheriff's office picked up, picked that back up. And I just want to remind people that, starting next week, we are going to be writing parking tickets for people parking on the side streets between 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM. 'Tis the season, if you will. I will also remind people that back in 2018, council enhanced the penalties behind those parking tickets. They essentially doubled. No panic, we're talking from $10 to $20. So we're not breaking any banks necessarily, but we are making a stronger point that we're not gonna write multiple tickets to people, and you're gonna get hit with an enhanced fee, if you will, if you continue to park on the side streets. We did not have those. I will just tell you, we did not have those tickets printed at the time. I had an agreement with Mayor Hugelit at the time, because I had just printed several hundred parking tickets, about the time that the council wanted to change it. Actually, if I remember right, the discussion came about because I bought the parking tickets. It was like, "Well, we need to look at that." We looked at it, and it was agreed upon to increase the amount. I said, "I just bought those." So anyway, we got into position to need more parking tickets, so I bought new parking tickets with the new amount. So people may come in and complain that we're charging more, but that actually was deferred for several years now. But anyway, and that is all I have.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Are we able to trade in the ammunition, the unused 40-caliber ammunition for new 9-millimeter ammunition?
We don't have that much that's in, we don't have like bulk ammunition for that, to be able to do that. We have partial cases throughout. I planned on returning that back to the officers so they could use it with the guns that they buy. If I had intact, you know, even boxes of 50, then I would do that, but I have enough partials throughout that it wouldn't be worth trying to turn that in. Yep. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Devin, do you have anything for us tonight?
City Hall will be open Saturday in the city office from 9:00 AM to 5:00. The purpose of this is that you can come in, fill out an application for an absentee ballot. You will leave with your actual ballot. You do not have to vote that day. If you so choose to wait until one day, you have to do the whole process in our office. Fill out the application, receive your ballot, vote your ballot, and you leave the ballot at the office. So the last day that you could truly get an absentee is on one day. If you have any questions, please call our office, and us ladies will help you as best we can.
Any questions for Devin? Okay, on to our committee reports. Okay, on to our committee reports.
I have this report that the ordinance committee had a meeting, actually yesterday. We're continuing to work on some cleanup and enhancement of a number of our ordinances that we're gonna be speaking with one here later on the agenda. And we've got some other ones that are currently at the city attorney being reviewed for minor enhancements. And our next meeting is scheduled for December the eighth at ten AM here in council chambers.
Very good. Any other committees?
The House committee?
Yeah.
That we haven't got in quite a long time. But I attended their meeting the other night.
The Star Society meeting, okay.
Meeting the other night and they said that they have received a grant for, to put towards the roof.
Good.
And of course, they don't have any, any details in order yet, but they're working on getting donation worked on, things like that, that will hopefully cut the costs. And I think they said they had to use it by October of twenty-three.
Okay.
So, that was the news.
Yes, that is.
Get it done before there's a problem.
Yeah, wonderful.
And hopefully, the expense won't be too great because in the past, they've gotten people that were, were really kind in the way they charged their labor and things like that. So, hopefully it goes that way again.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Moving then to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on to old business, this stuff, Kyle, I think can update us a little bit on this Chiwasi tornado siren project.
Hi, Ken. I appreciate you giving that this, this topic on the agenda. I would recommend that you take it off. We received correspondence back from American Tower and I was less than impressed. They're looking to, in my opinion, gouge not just the city, but the county for putting a twenty-foot single pole antenna on the tower. I talked with the salesperson that called me and I said, well, you know, our tower. And he said, well, let me correct you, it's actually our tower, you just own the land that it's on. And I said, well, I'll keep that in mind. And he was less than hospitable with the fact that they're using our tower. He can call it whatever he wants, it's our tower they lease. So, that being said, it's really put the county upside down. Several people are involved in trying to problem solve and figure out the next step because at this point, they're looking to charge fifteen hundred dollars a month for rental for fourteen years. The other thing that the sales rep said is, yeah, we'll, we'll look into this in fourteen years when the contract's up that we just signed earlier this year. So, if we all have memories that reach to that date fourteen years from now, I may even come back at that point. I was not pleased or impressed, but anyway, well, as far as any involvement from the city, it would pretty much be my efforts working with the county. But there's no leverage that we have through the contract that's been signed earlier this year to aid or help Chiwasi County with this project at this point.
That's pretty sad.
It's beyond sad, you're right. Yeah, not impressed.
Yeah, well, that's too good. Thank you for following up on that, though, and reporting back to us.
Yep.
Devin has a sticky note ready for the file.
All right.
You know, she was gonna fill my year calendar.
I might put it in my calendar now for.
You're gonna stay that long?
No, I just said I would come back. I didn't think you did. Any questions for me?
As far as grant opportunities for the siren, for our second siren and doing any improvements to the one we have, James Hisong has written a grant for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for security things. And some of that money might actually be able to be used for them, if we get it, but we don't know yet. He's also working on writing a grant for sidewalks, which is also kind of a general grant. And if there's money left from his writing of that grant, he will use it to write for specifically a siren grant. But so far, we're just waiting on that, so.
What would you like as a subject?
I think we can just remove it from the agenda and I'll bring it back to council once I hear from James.
Do you want me to report that what you reported and let it go, or do you want to table it indefinitely?
No, you can report what I reported and then let it go because then we address the issue once we know more. Okay, moving ahead to new business, we'll bring Kevin and John back to us to talk about the Solar B repairs for the lagoon.
I kinda touched on this during our report, a little prematurely, I suppose, but. You want me to work through the whole thing again?
No, I don't think you need to. Let's just ask council if anybody has questions. They have a copy of this, I think, in their packet, do you copy that?
I move that we accept a quote from I X O M Water Care for a amount not to exceed five thousand, five eighty-seven seventy for service and parts to the Solar Bs and authorize Superintendent of D P W to sign quote acceptance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mike, seconded by Larry, to accept that quote, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion passes, you're all set.
Thank you.
And now, Megan, you can come back up and talk to us about the first quarter budget comparison.
This is your best because I don't really have anything specific to point out. Looking through the budget, I noted that at the end of first quarter, all of our funds are at about twenty-five percent of their annual budget, as we expected for this time of year, both in revenue and expenses. Nothing out of the ordinary, nothing that's catching my eyes, we're gonna have to address later as a shortfall or anything like that. And no suggested budget amendments. Any specific questions?
Any questions for Megan?
Megan Galbraith, Treasury reported the first quarter budget comparison and proposed no amendments for this quarter. I move that we accept the first quarter budget comparison as presented by the Treasury.
We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion passes. Thank you, Megan. Looking now for possible approval of the police records management. Does anybody have any further questions for Kyle about that? Kyle, do you have more information you wanna share about that?
I could share more information if you need it, I'd be happy to give you a brief history of what we've had and what we're looking at.
Sure.
Okay, so we've gone through several progressions since I've been here as far as records management or report writing. There's some pretty antiquated systems we've used in the past. And then we transitioned to Core, and Core is based out of Lansing and they have done a phenomenal job for us. I've really been happy with the product, I actually have no complaints with the product whatsoever. Unfortunately, progressively, since we took them on, I couldn't give you a date other than probably, I would say, sixteen or seventeen years ago when we went with them. It's gone up a couple hundred dollars a year for the annual maintenance fee, which is pretty typical for any kind of software. Unfortunately, for a five-man department, we're looking to pay close to thirty-four hundred dollars just for the year for the maintenance of that program. That kinda burned me a little bit and I just couldn't stomach the thought of paying that much money for such a small department. Started inquiring to, looking into a product called S R M S. It's actually started by the state police in Saginaw County. Couldn't tell you when, several years ago. Anyway, it's moved throughout the state of Michigan. And one of the huge benefits with this is it has always cost two hundred dollars per officer per year. That's it. So, we have four full-time officers and we have two part-time officers, that would be one full-time equivalent. So we're looking at a thousand dollars a year versus thirty-four hundred dollars. There is an upfront cost for some hardware, for a printer and barcode scanner that would aid Sergeant Monroe and I in record evidence management and streamline that process greatly for what we're doing right now. So needless to say, we're transitioning to a new program and we're actually going to be saving a lot of money this year, but even more money next year because the eleven hundred dollars that's in the motion is actually just a one-time fee that we have to pay.
Any questions for Kyle? Any just questions?
Pretty well received around all of the other municipalities and police departments that have got, have used.
It is, there are several within Chiwasi County, but more noteworthy, we're talking about U of M Ann Arbor and this Michigan State University, Grand Rapids. And actually, the neat thing is we'll all be connected to their records too, so they can see ours, we can see theirs. So, we have contact with so-and-so, and so-and-so has had contact somewhere else in the state. We'll be able to see what exactly that contact was, so. Record sharing is gonna be huge with this program. East Lansing, I believe, is a part of that as well.
I move that we approve the three-year agreement with Michigan State Police, which is a subscription to the statewide records management system and authorized payment of two hundred dollars per sworn officer per year and also authorized police chief to sign the agreement.
We have a second? Mindy? Seconded, okay, so motion from Steve, seconded from Mindy. For that motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And now we have another issue to talk about the barcode application.
This is the equipment for motion to go with it.
I move that we authorize payment to barcode applications incorporated for a month not to exceed one thousand, forty-four dollars and thirty cents for S R M S equipment and also authorize police chief to sign the quote.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion passes. Thank you, Kyle.
Excellent, thank you.
Possible adoption of amended ordinance number three sixty-seven regarding open burning. Larry, do you have anything to?
Unless anybody's got any questions, we did the reading of it at our last meeting and I know there was a whole discussion then, does anybody have any issues, questions that have come up since then? If not, I move that ordinance number three sixty-seven, which amends ordinance regarding open burning and which was read at the October twentieth, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting, be adopted.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion passes. Possible approval of fireworks. This is in regard to the fireworks for the Christmas fantasy, thank you, Gash.
This is very standard, they'll need our approval for the firework application that they have to go through the state. We always put precautions in there, it takes a while for them to get the plans and the certification, insurance to us. So typically, what we do is we let them know, as long as they can comply by December first, council would authorize that fire, that they would be, the pyrotecs would be able to do the fireworks for the December tenth.
Any of your tease that Mother Nature will cooperate this year?
No, here's. Let's not talk about that. Let's not jinx it.
Quite well taken.
This one, oh, and I guess should I add, so they did honor it, we are not paying for fireworks again, but because of the permits that they still have to pull again, I'm waiting to hear on the administration fees. They said it would not exceed ten percent of the original cost, so I have not heard that price yet, but five hundred dollars or less.
I move that we approve the permit application for fireworks display from Ace Pyro LLC contingent upon them providing the city with all necessary plans, procedures, insurance certifications, and other items which prove compliance of our city code number six ninety-two and that all documentation and approvals be completed by December first, twenty twenty-two.
Motion from Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion passes. Do we have any other business that may come before council at this time? Any public comments? Hearing none? Any agenda items for our next meeting?
We've heard something from the city attorney on a couple of the ordinance things we've gotten to offer, but I don't, you've already got that on the radar, haven't you?
No further business then, meeting is adjourned at seven forty-seven.